Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor Downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Good morning, and welcome to the February 10th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has the big dog for today.
He's almost as tall as Ted.
He's got to take this dog home with him. Oh, oh my goodness. He's so excited.
Sit down. Don't want to sit. You gonna sit or what?
There you go.
Our featured pet this week is a Great Dane lab mix. He's about a year old. He was found on West 10th in Elyria. He's got a great personality, fun to play with, gonna make a great dog for somebody. He'll be available on, tell them, Saturday at 3 o'clock, right? You looking for a home? Stop by our dog. If you don't want a big dog, we've got little dogs too. Yeah, come on.
I really think you should take him home, Commissioner. I have a thought for today sent to me via the internet email by one of my classmates. I think it's very appropriate for today. It says, "Accept that some days you're the pigeon and some days you're the statue." Today's my dad's birthday. He would be well over 100 years old, but I'm thinking of him today because he was a great man. Is everyone here Sally from your group? Then we'll start with you. We won't wait for any intermission or 9:45 or anything, so. We want to welcome you back again this year, and thank you for coming. This will be a presentation by the Four Chaplains Ceremony.
Once again, we, the members of the Amherst American Legion Post 118, would like to thank the Commissioners for inviting us here to relive the memory and the story of the Four Chaplains. So, without further ado. On February 3rd, 1943, the freighter rose and fell sluggishly at her pier, with the dark waves slapping at her sides. The garish New England night was full of shadows and the sound of winches, screeching cranes, and the shuffling cadence of weary troops. One of the black shadows hung over the stern of the freighter, almost obliterating her name, the Dorchester. The vessel was old and small, and only the emergency of total war had forced her transformation into the troop ship. On this night in mid-January 1943, she was being loaded with troops at the Massachusetts port, her destination hidden in an envelope of secret orders. Soldiers, 904 men in all, tramped through the companionway down into the bowels of the ship. The naked light bulb showed them their quarters, bunks hastily built into the hold, four tiers high, six meager feet of space per man. Among their number walked Four Chaplains. At 06:00 hours the next morning, the Dorchester cast off her lines and headed out to sea. The men grew tense with fear of the unknown moments ahead, and rumors as to their destination flew across the ship. Only the sky pilot knew they were headed for Greenland. Pardon my sniffling, I have sinus. At this period of WWII, Allied shipping under constant attack by wolf packs of Nazi U-boats were being sunk almost as fast as it could be built. All available destroyers were sent to guard the carriers and the battle wagons pounding the Imperial Japanese Islands in the Far Pacific and the vital convoys to the United Kingdom. For such as the lumbering Dorchester, there were only a few Coast Guard cutters and make do craft for escort. And now introduce Sally.
That was Jack McNaughton, by the way.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Sally Cornwell, from the Amherst American Legion Ladies Auxiliary Unit 118. Day became night, and night became day, as the little convoy followed the course to Greenland. As the month of January ran out, the Four Chaplains bunked, talked, and worked together, comforting the sick, reassuring the troubled ones, and joining in the singing and daily banter. They were admired by all, because while they were men of God, they were first of all, real men. A mysterious sense of danger was prevalent throughout the ship. On the evening of the second day of the new month, one of the three escort Coast Guard cutters blinked a message across the water. "We are being followed by a submarine." The PA system crackled with orders, and the crew jumped to their guns. The Dorchester's engine whined and labored to gain speed, but could push the ungainly freighter only at 10 knots. The convoy stopped briefly at St. John's Newfoundland, and then moved on northeastward through the strange whiteness of an Arctic night. On the next morning, February 3rd, the ship's bells sounded 1 o'clock. They never sounded again. A minute later, a torpedo smashed into the Dorchester, well below the waterline amid ship. The torpedo exploded with all its terrific fury in the engine room. Bursting steam engine lines failed, scaled the engineers, scalded the engineers, and oilers with cruel abandon. The sea rushed into the hole like a tidal wave, drowning 100 men. Stark panic whipped across the ship, blotting out in an instant the so newly acquired training in discipline and survival. Men cursed bitterly and others wept, as they struggled feverishly with boats and lines. Others rushed below deck in search of forgotten life belts, never to return.
Through this scene of terror moved a few strong men, purposeful, calm, and seemingly unafraid. Among those were the Four Chaplains, rushing everywhere about the ship, in the terror-ridden interior and the crazy tilted deck, giving men the strength to live and others the courage to die. Suddenly, the ship shivered, and men everywhere cried out, "She's going down, we will be sucked under." The chaplain sensed this threat. "Over the side, men, make it fast," they cried. The wind tore the words from their lips. "Get away from the ship before it pulls you down." Men looked at the Four Chaplains with new wonder, seeking a sign, some symbol to carry them into the valley of death. One man, more boy than man, made his way to the group at the rail. "Padre, I lost my life jacket, I can't swim, I'll..." Before he could finish, one of the chaplains took off his own life jacket and put it around the boy's shoulder. "Take this, I'm staying, I won't need it." The soldier tied to jacket strings, mounted the rail, and dropped into the sea, now almost level with the deck. The other chaplains followed without hesitation, with full realization that there would be no surviving in the icy sea without their life jackets. During the last dying moments of the freighter, Four Chaplains, their crosses on their collars and one with the tablets of law on his, stood with arms linked in devoted prayer, as the vessel's bow came up and then slid under the raging surface. Somewhere off in the seething seas, four other men escaped the jaws of death, supported by the chaplain's life jackets. All of the 904 men aboard the Dorchester, only 209 survived. Many of these survivors owe their lives to the spiritual courage and supreme sacrifice of the Four Chaplains, who have passed a legacy of brotherhood to all men. Aboard the Dorchester were four US chaplains, Protestant, Catholic, and Jewish, who each in his own way answered the call to serve God and man. With arms linked and symbolic of their common bond, the Four Chaplains remained praying on the deck until it sank into the black waters of everlasting glory. The Four Chaplains were Reverend George L. Fox, Methodist; Dr. Alexander Goode, Jewish Rabbi; Reverend Clark V. Poling, Reformed Dutch; Father John P. Washington, Catholic priest. Greater love hath no man than this, than a man lay down his life for his friends. We thank you once again.
Thanks for coming. That's Tom Hock, Past Commander of American Legion.
And we certainly thank all three of you.
Thank you, guys. Nice job.
Come back next year. Everybody needs to hear that story.
And we remember the gentleman who gave us the stamps last year.
Yep. That's cool. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Advances?
So moved.
Discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to make a comment that, I think we spent a little over $70,000, and it's to purchase 26 ankle bracelets and 14 alcohol monitors, so it's looking like, hopefully he's gonna keep about 40 people out of our jail system. Is that an accurate statement?
I think she's directing her statement to you.
Maybe you can answer that?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I was looking in my folder.
Quit looking in your folder. Pay attention.
That type of monitoring is always more cost-effective than incarcerating prisoners.
Right.
Actually, they've been getting quite a bit of grant money for this equipment, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo? Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cardes?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have some potential hires at the Job and Family Services. As always, we're continuing to talk about some ongoing labor negotiations. Specifically, this round would be discussing the Teamsters. Both of those subjects are permissible for an executive session under the Sunshine Law, and I would request that we go into executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today to talk about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading, and the same for the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of February 3rd, 2010, excuse me.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Enter an agreement with Brad &amp; Brew LLC extending their commitment to operate Lorraine County Diner until December 31st, 2010, with modification in operating hours from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Monday and Friday, and 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
So moved.
Second.
I think they're doing a wonderful job. Good food.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Authorize appointment of Dale Rundo, Columbia Township Trustee, and his alternate Amy Zamania. Rochester Township Trustee is Lorraine County's NOACAs. Appointments as recommended by Lorraine County Township Association, which is contingent upon withdrawal of any and all legal action filed in Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas on January 29, 2010. Further, Virginia Haynes Wellington Township Trustee will resign if all conditions are met in order to restore communications between the two governmental entities.
So moved. I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo? Aye.
I would just like to comment that I think Virginia Haynes and Jerry Innes, I would like to thank them for the compromise with the Lorraine County Township Association. I do believe they led the way, and I want to thank Rob Shaitar for being here this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Our community development approves semi-annual revolving loan fund for the period July 1st, 2009 through December 31st, 2009, is submitted by the department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 09519, adopted July 30th, 2009, accepting the recommendation of Lorraine County Recycling Revolving Loan Fund Oversight Committee as determined at the meeting on July 21st, 2009, to approve a recycling revolving loan fund application submitted by ADI Wind in the amount of $130,000 for the purpose of recycled machinery and equipment for the development of a prototype wind turbine gearbox, thereby removing these items from the waste stream. Amendment is to reflect Section E will now state 60 consecutive monthly payments of principal and interest shall be appropriated based on amount of drawdown.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, approve and enter a professional services agreement with Planet Moran, PLOC Cleveland, to provide Medicaid and Medicare cost reports for year ended December 31st, 2009, in the amount not to exceed $300 plus out-of-pocket expenses, and authorize director to execute in behalf of foreprosecutor's proposed form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under the engineer, instruct clerk to advertise bids for Highway Department materials to include limestone aggregate and asphalt plant mixes. Notice will be in the Chronicle on February 12th and 19th, and open at 2:00 p.m. on February 26th.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Or contract to Carvo Paving Company, Inc., Caihoga Falls, in the amount of $4,411,249.78 for the Colorado Avenue Reconstruction Project. 10 bids were open on January 26th, this being most responsive complying specifications, funding reconstruction 100% era, and no retainers will be held. Issue notice to proceed honor about February 22nd, and complete honor before October 1st, and letter will be submitted to OPWC, which will be used for any amounts over the federal cap.
Mr. Carney, do you have any comment on this project, since it's such a large project for our county? Morning.
Morning, Ken.
It's a large project, and it was a lengthy project, and it was a joint effort between the City of Lorraine, the County Commissioners themselves, and the Village of Sheffield. The unique part about this is, we were going to do 80%, 20% local match, and the engineering was going to be loaned out. Over the years, Transportation Improvement District Committee helped tremendously in helping with the cost of the engineering. But the unique part about this project is, we got the ARRA money because we had the engineering done. And I've been preaching that for a long time. If you get your engineering done, you're gonna be first in line. And we did. Same thing with Russell Road. That was gonna be 80/20. I've got 100% on that for my money, I call it, ARA. So, long story short, we took advantage of that, and we're happy to do it. NOACA is very happy, too, because they have a minimum requirement of 50% of their allocation, and this helped them fulfill that minimum requirement. That was a 90 to 120-day window. So they're appreciative of that, that's why I brought up the Colorado and the Russell Road. So, we're appreciative again on that. Coupled with that, I took it upon myself to wrote a letter to Senator Brown, and Senator Voynovich, Congressman Cafter, Congresswoman Cafter, Congresswoman Betty Sutton, Senator Sue Morano. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read this, it's very short. But, this is what we sent them, along with a large package showing how we did it, news releases supporting it, letters of support from Senator Brown, or then Congressman Brown, Congressman Brown, and Marcy Cafter, numerous letters of support, as well as editorial supporting program, as well as my news release and information of how we accomplished this step by step. And I use Colorado Avenue Agreement with Mayor Hunter as an example. And, my letter goes like this. "In July of 2005, Lorraine County Engineers' Office, with the support from the Lorraine County Commissioners, developed a financial plan to help our struggling communities kick-start construction for their most critical roadway improvement projects. We accomplished this by providing Lorraine County cities and villages with a 10-year interest-free loan to fund their upfront engineering costs. As you are aware, the single most critical item that drives a community's ability to obtain federal dollars for construction is simply having plans developed and in place to start the work. With no mechanism available to fund said upfront engineering, our communities, like so many others, were stuck in a proverbial catch-22. The attached document outlines how we resolved this issue together with county commissioners and county engineer for the residents of Lorraine County, and felt it important to share this with you. It's my belief that this same concept can have tremendous impact for many Lorraine County communities and other communities across Ohio, now struggling to manage their infrastructure needs with the limited dollars available. Hope you find the enclosed information useful, it provides beneficial for constituents. If you want to discuss this in more detail, please feel free to call me." That was my plea to get Obama money for engineering. Not just construction, but the engineering. They give us 100% on engineering, we'll get the 80%, the 20% a couple of years later. If that happens now, the construction that you will see, are seeing, and will be seeing in the next two years in Lorraine County could continue. Because if we had ARRA money today, or 60 days from now, we had ARRA money today for that engineering. We could finish that job in two years, engineer it, get the 80/20 and build it. Same construction that's happening now, it will happen in the next two years because of ARA, could continue and keep those employees and construction workers in Lorraine County. So, if you'd like to help with that?
I do have one question.
Appreciate it.
I have a question for you. It's a $4 million project. I see Kocin came in real close, like $36,000. The local preference doesn't apply in this instance?
Coupled with TID and OPW, this is truly 100%.
No, I'm saying the person that's being awarded the bid, we'd like to try to keep them in Lorraine County.
Oh.
This company's from Caihoga Falls.
That's correct. Lowest and best bid winner.
Right.
Jerry has commented here.
You can't do that in the federal dollars.
Oh, you can't apply that with federal dollars?
It's great thinking, I wish you could, but federal dollars, it's only on the non-federal way.
Oh, okay.
Federal, yeah, 3% doesn't kick in.
All right, darn it.
Besides, you gotta live out of 3%.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
However, we were fortunate to get 10% less than my engineer's estimate, it was 4.9, and it's 4.4, so.
That's great.
Then we've got some OPW money that we were going to apply for that, and that's in the unfunded list, and we're gonna use that again, in Lorraine County, immediately, as soon as this is the word.
This concept that we developed at your suggestion has been applauded by NOACA throughout the region as being novel.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, and I can truthfully say this, this is the only one of its kind of country.
And yesterday?
It's working.
We heard the mayor of Elyria bemoan the fact that he didn't have enough engineering ready to move to the next level for projects that he might get money for. So, congratulations again, and thank you for being so proactive. We're all benefits.
We've got North Ridgeville, we've got Grafton, we've got Lorraine for two jobs, Cooper Foster Tower Boulevard, Leirnagle and North Ridgeville. Got the interchange of 303 and 301 in La Grange. Grafton's coming in really quickly. And, another little advantage to this, I would say, that nobody realizes, but hopefully the news release will bring out this attention to an eight-foot-wide asphalt bike trail that's part of the project, 100% funded, constructed along the south side of the road between East River Road and Harris Road, for future connection with the proposed Metro Parks Trail system.
Nice.
We took advantage of that, we knew the design, we put the design in our design, and we got 100% money, so Metro wouldn't have to pay for that. That, and got Mayor Hunter three signals, too, while I was out.
He's a happy guy.
He's stacking his job better than I am, trust me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Excellent.
Did anybody make a motion? Also moved.
Second.
Anything further, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cardes, County Minister?
I have one quick issue this morning, Commissioners, that need your attention. I met with Children and Family First yesterday, and we're waiting on some ARRA money, some stimulus funds, to take care of some of our Help Me Grow program. And, it's been slow to arrive, and it is coming, but we have some vendors that need to get paid. And I'm going to request an advance for slightly over $27,000 from the general fund, so that we can get those vendors paid. And, the money should be here, I would say, in the next couple of weeks. Our Budget Director prepared the paperwork yesterday, but some of our nonprofits out here are struggling to keep their head above water, and I'm hopeful that this will give them a little breathing room while we wait for those funds to get on board. This isn't all we're waiting for, but this is enough to get some of our invoices paid. Again, this won't cost the general fund anything, except to go into the paperwork procedure. And once the money's here, the Budget Department will park it back in these accounts.
Is this one action?
This is the paperwork necessary to do, yes.
One action.
To do the advance and place it in the proper accounts.
Also moved for approval.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
I think I still hear your dog barking out there.
Yeah.
Would you please take your dog?
It's waiting for Ted.
It's waiting for me.
In fact, I had Jack put it in the back of Ted's expression. And then you know what a good soldier Jack is, I'm sure that.
That's right, Jack does as he's told, right?
I'm sure it's there. That'll conclude my comments this morning, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Innes Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I have no report this morning.
Commissioners' report.
One second. Do you want these, Teresa?
Yes.
Okay. We got a letter from the sheriff about some locks over at the Justice Center totaling only about $300, and there's some kind of holdup on that issue. Can you expound on that, please?
Well, there's no holdup, I just don't think the locks belong in our maintenance department to fix, and so I sent it back.
Don't we have money in the Justice Center fund to take care of these kind of items?
No, ma'am.
No?
No. The, it was sent over by the Sheriff's Department indicating they thought this was a maintenance issue, and I sent it back saying I didn't believe it was a maintenance issue. The...
I really don't want to squabble with the sheriff over $300 locks. I think we should just pay it, it's only $300, in the scheme of millions of dollars of budget, $300 doesn't seem like very much to get in an argument about.
A thousand requests for $300 is a lot, and everybody is sending me everything now, since they feel pinched, and I don't blame them, but we're pinched over here, too, and we've never paid for those locks before.
Doesn't he have his own maintenance people?
Yes, he does.
Well, his maintenance people are doing the work, we just need to purchase the locks, correct?
Once again, Commissioner, I'm not trying to be contrary, we've just never paid for the locks before, not to my recollection.
Well, how often do they need to be changed?
I couldn't tell you that.
Well, I'd make a recommendation that we pay, I don't know if I have any support from my other Commissioners, but, $300. That's not, my other issue is if people here can get the agenda, but for those of you at home, under Number 4, Board Correspondence, it is from Ohio Attorney General Richard Cordray, and it was kind of difficult to read my, the website on my, I don't know if you could read yours, but it's www.ohioattorneygeneral.gov/smallbusinessflyer, F-L-I-E-R. He's very proactive in helping small businesses, and a lot of small business people are experiencing fraud as far as purchasing things on the internet and things like that, so he's recovered over $60,000 to help these small business people, so they don't get ripped off and keep their businesses open. So, if, Hal, if you can please put that up on the screen for small business people that watch on Saturday or Monday, I appreciate it. And, I think that's all I have, that's all I have. Oh, and I know Brad wrote a story this morning about the meeting we had with Stu Lichter yesterday, it was very productive, that was for the Quarry Project. yesterday, it was very productive, that was for the quarry project. I had intended to go to the State of the City in Aliria, and our meeting ran to almost twelve o'clock, and by the time I got there, there was no parking, so I'm assuming that it was a very good, well-attended event. Yeah, I couldn't find a parking space, so I ended up going to Applebee's for lunch, so, that's the end of my report.
End of parking industry, Commissioner Ross.
Yeah, I know, it's great.
It was a packed house.
Yeah, it's good.
Mayor Grace did a nice job explaining the issues he went through, it's the first State of the City this year. Well, no, we did North Ridgeville's last week, so now we're on two of them, so City of Lorain coming up, and have we scheduled ours yet, Jim, for the State of the County?
No, we have not. When I, when I spoke to my three esteemed superiors, we had several different opinions on when that should occur, and-
As he oozes with sarcasm on his superior's line.
Well, I, you had different, you had to express different views about the timing of that with regard to current fiscal situations and the work that still needed to be done, and there were some concerns about the report, and clearly we have some budgetary issues because we're still on a quarterly appropriation, and you know, how we were gonna report out that. And then there was some concern that you didn't wanna do it in February because both cities were reporting out in February, we had tried to do that before, thus, you know, overextending those folks that do usually like to go to these things, and they had three of them really right in a row. Any direction would be greatly appreciated. We had ours at Spitzer the last time, and I thought it was a fairly good event, so if you have direction for me, I'll certainly get it done.
Also condolence is out to Sonny Miller and his family, his wife Cookie passed away. Dear friends, really involved, Cookie's been involved in the political scene for, boy, as far back as I can remember, and her husband was former bailiff for Judge Betlesky, so condolences out to the family, in my report.
Thank you. I'd just like to publicly thank especially Ken Sislak, who gave a presentation last Friday at the jointly sponsored Team Lorain County, Lorain County Community Alliance Groundhog Day. He talked about commuter rail service and what it would mean to Lorain County, and apparently the Morning Journal thought it was pretty good too, because they had an editorial on Saturday entitled "Com commuter rail service: Economic teamwork key for Lorain County." So it kinda said that we were on the right track. Got that? Right track. I love that, it just came out. So, thanks to all who participated, especially those who worked behind the scenes to make it a worthwhile event, and Hal has sent an email that he will be delivering the website information today, so if anybody wants to view the proceedings, it'll be on Lorain County Community Alliance's website starting today. Thank you.
It's a very good event.
Very nice job. They said some very good things there, especially Jim Robey.
He said nice things about us, that's why you liked him.
Well, no, he just said nice things about what Lorain County's doing-
Well, that's what I meant, Lorain-
-in the sixteen county region.
I, that includes us.
Yes, it does include us.
Thank you, thank you.
Board Correspondents?
Moves and reading be waived.
Second.
Session, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody?
Public comment?
Want to speak?
See Rob Johnson, what are you doing here today? Just come to hang out?
Just came to listen.
Okay.
You probably thought there was gonna be something-
I thought you were gonna give me some good information about the Air Force, so.
We had that airport meeting last night. We're still there.
And, good, and we saw you at the North Ridgeville State of the City address as well. You get out in the community too, huh, Rob?
Yes, I do.
Anybody else? I move to go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the administrator.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowalski? Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorain County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorain County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorain County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorain County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorain County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorain County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorain. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorain when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorain's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's waterwell. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorain County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskyville, today the intersection of Roots fifty-eight and one thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorain County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorain County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County, and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake, and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rosson in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossons were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossumville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossumville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Aliria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorain County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. Leport developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorain County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Aliria, and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemus Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed, and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorain County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Aliria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base, as well as the center of government for Lorain County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of eighteen seventeen, moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton, and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laboree, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorain County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three, and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed, but also multiracial, and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as new Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorain County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Junior became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Senior had arrived, and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorain County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed, and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LaGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name LaGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LaGrange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LaGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcocks, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed as the- But that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly and by eighteen thirty-five, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February tenth meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kallo has the big dog for today.
He's almost as tall as Ted.
He's got to take this dog home with him. Oh, oh my goodness. He's so excited.
There you go.
Our featured pet this week is a Great Dane Lab Mix. He's about a year old. He was found on West Tenth in Elyria. He's got a great personality, fun to play with, gonna make a great dog for somebody. He'll be available on... Tell him Saturday at three o'clock, right? You're looking for a home? Stop by our dog. If you don't want a big dog, we've got little dogs too.
I really think you should take him home, Commissioner. I have a thought for today sent to me via the internet email by one of my classmates. I think it's very appropriate for today. It says, "Accept that some days you're the pigeon and some days you're the statue." Thank you. Today's my dad's birthday. He would be well over a hundred years old, but I'm thinking of him today because he was a great man. Is everyone here Sally from your group? Then we'll start with you. We won't wait for any intermission or nine forty-five or anything, so. We want to welcome you back again this year and thank you for coming. This will be a presentation by the Four Chaplains Ceremony.
Good morning. Once again, we, the members of the Amherst American Legion Post One Eighteen, would like to thank the Commissioners for inviting us here to relive the memory and the story of the Four Chaplains. So without further ado. On February third, nineteen forty-three, the freighter rose and fell sluggishly at her pier with the dark waves slapping at her sides. The garish New England night was full of shadows and the sound of winches, screeching cranes, and the shuffling cadence of weary troops. One of the black shadows hung over the stern of the freighter almost obliterating her name, the Dorchester. The vessel was old and small and only the emergency of total war had forced her transformation into the troop ship. On this night in mid-January nineteen forty-three, she was being loaded with troops at the Massachusetts port, her destination hidden in an envelope of secret orders. Soldiers, nine hundred and four men in all, tramped through the companionway down into the bowels of the ship. The naked light bulbs showed them their quarters, bunks hastily built into the hold, four tiers high, six meager feet of space per man. Among their number walked Four Chaplains. At oh-six-hundred hours the next morning, the Dorchester cast off her lines and headed out to sea. The men grew tense with fear of the unknown moments ahead and rumors as to their destination flew across the ship. Only the sky pilot knew they were headed for Greenland. Pardon my sniffling. I have sinus. At this period of World War Two, Allied shipping under constant attack by wolf packs of Nazi U-boats were being sunk almost as fast as it could be built. All available destroyers were sent to guard the carriers and the battle wagons pounding the Imperial Japanese Islands in the Far Pacific and the vital convoys to the United Kingdom. For such as the lumbering Dorchester, there were only a few Coast Guard cutters and make-do craft for escort. And now introduce Sally.
That was Jack McNaughton, by the way.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Sally Cornwell from the Amherst American Legion Ladies Auxiliary Unit One Eighteen. Day became night and night became day as the little convoy followed the course to Greenland. As the month of January ran out, the Four Chaplains bunked, talked, and worked together, comforting the sick, reassuring the troubled ones, and joining in the singing and daily banter. They were admired by all because while they were men of God, they were first of all, real men. A mysterious sense of danger was prevalent throughout the ship. On the evening of the second day of the new month, one of the three escort Coast Guard cutters blinked a message across the water. "We are being followed by a submarine." The P.A. system crackled with orders and the crew jumped to their guns. The Dorchester's engine whined and labored to gain speed but could push the ungainly freighter only at ten knots. The convoy stopped briefly at Saint John's Newfoundland and then moved on northeastward through the strange whiteness of an Arctic night. On the next morning, February third, the ship's bells sounded one o'clock. They never sounded again. A minute later, a torpedo smashed into the Dorchester well below the waterline amid ship. The torpedo exploded with all its terrific fury in the engine room. Bursting steam engine lines failed, scaled the engineers, scalded the engineers, and oilers with cruel abandon. The sea rushed into the hole like a tidal wave, drowning a hundred men. Stark panic whipped across the ship, blodding out in an instant the so newly acquired training and discipline and survival. Men cursed bitterly and others wept as they struggled feverishly with boats and lines. Others rushed below deck in search of forgotten life belts, never to return.
Through this scene of terror moved a few strong men, purposeful, calm, and seemingly unafraid. Among those were the Four Chaplains, rushing everywhere about the ship in the terror-ridden interior and the crazy tilted deck, giving men the strength to live and others the courage to die. Suddenly the ship shivered and men everywhere cried out, "She's going down. We'll be sucked under." The chaplain sensed this threat. "Over the side, men. Make it fast," they cried. The wind tore the words from their lips. "Get away from the ship before it pulls you down." Men looked at the Four Chaps- Chaplains with new wonder, seeking a sign, some symbol to carry them into the valley of death. One man, more boy than man, made his way to the group at the rail. "Padre, I lost my life jacket. I can't swim. I'll..." Before he could finish, one of the chaplains took off his own life jacket and put it around the boy's shoulder. "Take this. I'm staying. I won't need it." The soldier tied the jacket strings, mounted the rail, and dropped into the sea, now almost level with the deck. The other chaplains followed without hesitation with full realization that there would be no surviving in the icy sea without their life jackets. During the last dying moments of the freighter, four chaplains, their crosses on their collars and one with the tablets of law on his, stood with arms linked in devoted prayer as the vessel's bow came up and then slid under the raging surface. Somewhere off in the seething seas, four other men escaped the jaws of death supported by the chaplain's life jackets. All of the nine hundred and four men aboard the Dorchester, only two hundred and nine survived. Many of these survivors owe their lives to the spiritual courage and supreme sacrifice of the Four Chaplains, who have passed a legacy of brotherhood to all men. Aboard the Dorchester were four U.S. chaplains, Protestant, Catholic, and Jewish, who each in his own way answered the call to serve God and man. With arms linked and symbolic of their common bond, the Four Chaplains remained praying on the deck until it sank into the black waters of everlasting glory. The Four Chaplains were Reverend George L. Fox, Methodist; Dr. Alexander Goode, Jewish Rabbi; Reverend Clark V. Poling, Reformed Dutch; Father John P. Washington, Catholic priest. Greater love hath no man than this, than a man lay down his life for his friends. We thank you once again.
Thanks for coming. That's Tom Hock, past commander of the American Legion.
And we certainly thank all three of you.
Thank you, guys. Nice job.
Come back next year. Everybody needs to hear that story.
And we remember the gentleman who gave us the stamps last year.
Yep. That's cool.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment that I think we spent a little over seventy thousand dollars and it's to purchase twenty-six ankle bracelets and fourteen alcohol monitors. So it's looking like hopefully he's gonna keep about forty people out of our jail system. Is that an accurate statement?
I think she's directing her statement to you.
Maybe you can answer that?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I was looking in my folder.
Quit looking in your folder. Pay attention.
That type of monitoring is always more cost-effective than incarcerating prisoners.
Right.
Actually, they've been getting quite a bit of grant money for this equipment, too.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cardes?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have some potential hires at the Job and Family Services. As always, we're continuing to talk about some ongoing labor negotiations. Specifically, this round would be discussing the Teamsters. Both of those subjects are permissible for an executive session under the Sunshine Law and I would request that we go into executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today to talk about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading, the same for the County Commissioners' Meeting Minutes of February thirty, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, excuse me.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Enter an agreement with Braden Brew LLC extending their commitment to operate Lorraine County Diner until December thirty-first, two thousand ten, with modification in operating hours from seven-thirty a.m. to two p.m. on Monday and Friday and seven-thirty a.m. to three p.m. on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I think they're doing a wonderful job.
Mm-hmm. Good food.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Authorize appointment of Dale Rundo, Columbia Township Trustee, and his alternate Amy Zamania. Rochester Township Trustee is Lorraine County's Noakas. Appointments as recommended by Lorraine County Township Association, which is contingent upon withdrawal of any and all legal action filed in Lorraine County Court of Common Pleas on January twenty-ninth, two thousand ten. Further, Virginia Haynes, Wellington Township Trustee, will resign if all conditions are met in order to restore communications between the two governmental entities.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cardes?
Aye.
I would just like to comment that I think Virginia Haynes and Jerry Ennis, I would like to thank them for the compromise with the Lorraine County Township Association. I do believe they led the way and I want to thank Rob Shaitar for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Under Community Development, approve semi-annual revolving loan fund for the period July first, two thousand nine, through December thirty-first, two thousand nine, submitted by the department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Men Resolution Zero Nine Five Nineteen, adopted July thirtieth, two thousand nine, accepting the recommendation of Lorraine County Recycling Revolving Loan Fund Oversight Committee as determined at the meeting on July twenty-first, two thousand nine, to approve a recycling revolving loan fund application submitted by ADI Wind in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand for the purpose of recycled machinery and equipment for the development of a prototype wind turbine gearbox, thereby removing these items from the waste stream. Amendment is to reflect Section E will now state sixty consecutive monthly payments of principal and interest shall be prorated based on amount of drawdown.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, approve and enter a professional services agreement with Plannin Moran P.L.L.C., Cleveland, to provide Medicaid and Medicare cost reports for year ended December thirty-first, two thousand nine, in the amount not to exceed eight-three-hundred plus out-of-pocket expenses and authorize director to execute in behalf of Court of Prosecutors, per last inform.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under the engineer, instruct clerk to advertise bids for highway department materials to include limestone aggregate and asphalt plant mixes. Notice will be in the Chronicle on February twelfth and nineteenth and open at two p.m. on February twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Or contract to Carvo Paving Company, Inc., High Hoga Falls, in the amount of four million, four hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents for the Colorado Avenue reconstruction project. Ten bids were opened on January twenty-sixth, this being most responsive complying with specifications, funding for construction one-hundred percent era and no retainage will be held. Issue notice to proceed honor about February twenty-second and complete honor before October first and letter will be submitted to OPWC, which will be used for any amounts over the federal cap.
Mr. Carney, do you have any comment on this project? Since it's such a large project for our county?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ken.
It's a large project and it was a lengthy project and it was a joint effort between the City of Lorraine, the County Commissioners themselves, and the village of Sheffield. The unique part about this is we were going to do eighty percent, twenty percent local match and the engineering was going to be loaned out. Over the years, Transportation Improvement District Committee Over the years, Transportation Improvement District Committee helped tremendously in helping with the cost of the engineering. But the unique part about this project is, we got the era money because we had the engineering done. And I've been preaching that for a long time. If you get your engineering done, you're going to be first in line. And we did. Same thing with the Russell Road. That was going to be eighty, twenty. I've got a hundred percent on that for Obama money, I call it, ARA. So, long story short, we took advantage of that, and we're happy to do it. NOACA is very happy, too, because they have a minimum requirement of fifty percent of their allocation, and this helped them fulfill that minimum requirement. That was a ninety to a hundred and twenty-day window. So they're appreciative of that. That's why I brought up the Colorado and the Russell Road. So, we're appreciative again on that. Coupled with that, I took it upon myself to wrote a letter to Senator Brown and Senator Boynavich, Congressman Capter, Congresswoman Capter, Congresswoman Betty Sutton, Senator Sue Morano. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read this. It's very short. But this is what we sent them, along with a large package showing how we did it, news releases supporting it, letters of support from Senator Brown, or then Congressman Brown, Congressman Brown, and Marcy Capter, numerous letters of support, as well as editorials supporting the program, as well as my news release and information of how we accomplished this step-by-step. And I use Colorado Avenue Agreement with Mayor Hunter as an example. And my letter goes like this. "In July of two thousand and five, Lorraine County Engineers' Office, with the support from the Lorraine County Commissioners, developed a financial plan to help our struggling communities kick-start construction for their most critical roadway improvement projects. We accomplished this by providing Lorraine County cities and villages with a ten-year interest-free loan to fund their upfront engineering costs. As you are aware, the single most critical item that drives a community's ability to obtain federal dollars for construction is simply having plans developed and in place to start the work. With no mechanism available to fund said upfront engineering, our communities, like so many others, were stuck in a proverbial catch-22. The attached document outlines how we resolved this issue together with county commissioners and county engineer for the residents of Lorraine County, and felt it important to share this with you. It's my belief that this same concept can have tremendous impact for many Lorraine County communities and other communities across Ohio, now struggling to manage their infrastructure needs with the limited dollars available. Hope you find enclosed information useful. It provides beneficial for constituents. If you want to discuss this in more detail, please feel free to call me." That was my plea to get Obama money for engineering. Not just construction, but the engineering. They give us a hundred percent on engineering. We'll get the eighty percent, the twenty percent a couple of years later. If that happens now, the construction that you will see, are seeing, and will be seeing in the next two years in Lorraine County could continue. Because if we had era money today, or sixty days from now, we had era money today for that engineering. We could finish that job in two years, engineer it, get the eighty, twenty, and build it. Same construction that's happening now, it will happen in the next two years because of ARA, could continue and keep those employees and construction workers in Lorraine County. So, if you'd like to help with that?
Mm-hmm. I do have one question.
Appreciate it.
I have a question for you. It's a four-million-dollar project. I see Kocin came in real close, like thirty-six thousand dollars. The local preference doesn't apply in this instance?
Coupled with TID and OPW, this is truly a hundred percent.
No, I'm saying the person that's being awarded the bid, we'd like to try to keep him in Lorraine County.
Oh.
This company's from Cuyahoga Falls.
That's correct. Lowest and best bid win.
Right.
Jerry has come in here.
You can't do that in the federal dollars.
Oh, you can't apply that with federal dollars?
It's great thinking. I wish you could, but federal dollars, it's only on the non-federal one.
Okay.
Yeah, three percent doesn't kick in.
All right, darn it.
Besides, you've got to limit it to three percent.
Okay, thank you.
This...
Good job.
However, we were fortunate to get ten percent less than my engineers estimate. It was four point nine, and it's four point four, so.
That's great.
Then we've got some OPW money that we were going to apply for that, and that's in the unfunded list, and we're going to use that again in Lorraine County immediately, as soon as this is the word.
This concept that we developed at your suggestion has been applauded by NOACA throughout the region as being novel.
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, and I can truthfully say this, this is the only one of its kind of country.
And yesterday...
It's working.
We heard the mayor of Alurri bemoan the fact that he didn't have enough engineering ready to move to the next level for projects that he might get money for. So, congratulations again, and thank you for being so proactive. We're all benefits.
We've got North Ridgeville, we've got Grafton, we've got Lorraine for two jobs, Cooper Foster Tower Boulevard, Lyrdagle and North Ridgeville. Got the interchange of three oh three and three oh one on the Grange. Grafton's coming in really quickly. And another little advantage to this, I would say, that nobody realizes, but hopefully the news release will bring out this attention to an eight-foot-wide asphalt bike trail. It's part of the project, hundred percent funded, constructed along the south side of the road between East River Road and Harris Road for future connection with the proposed Metro Parks Trail system.
Nice.
We took advantage of that. We knew the design. We put the design in our design, and we got a hundred percent money, so Metro wouldn't have to pay for that. That, and got Mayor Hunter three signals, too, while I was out.
He's a happy guy.
He's stacking his job better than I am, trust me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Excellent.
Did anybody make a motion? Also moved.
Second.
Anything further, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cardes, County Minister?
I have one quick issue this morning, Commissioners, that need your attention. I met with Children and Family First yesterday, and we're waiting on some era money, stimulus funds, to take care of some of our Help Me Grow program. And it's been slow to arrive, and it is coming, but we have some vendors that need to get paid. And I'm willing to request an advance for slightly over twenty-seven thousand dollars from the general fund, so that we can get those vendors paid. And the money should be here, I would say, in the next couple of weeks. Our budget director prepared the paperwork yesterday. But some of our nonprofits out here are struggling to keep their head above water, and I'm hopeful that this will give them a little breathing room while we wait for those funds to get on board. This isn't all we're waiting for, but this is enough to get some of our invoices paid. Again, this won't cost the general fund anything, except to go into the paperwork procedure. And once the money's here, the Budget Department will pluck it back in these accounts.
Is this one action?
This is the paperwork necessary to do, yes.
One action.
To do the advance and place it in the proper accounts.
I'll so move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
I think I still hear your dog barking out there.
Yeah.
Would you please take your dog?
It's waiting for Ted.
It's waiting for me.
In fact, I had Jack put it in the back of Ted's expression. And then you know what a good soldier Jack is. I'm sure it's there. That'll conclude my comments this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Innes Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I have no report this morning.
Commissioners' report.
One second. Do you want these, Teresa?
Yes.
Okay. We got a letter from the sheriff about some locks over at the Justice Center totaling only about three hundred dollars, and there's some kind of holdup on that issue. Can you expound on that, please?
There was no holdup. I just don't think the locks belong in our maintenance department to fix, and so I sent it back.
Don't we have money in the Justice Center fund to take care of these kind of items?
No, ma'am.
No?
No. The, it was sent over by the Sheriff's Department indicating they thought this was a maintenance issue, and I sent it back saying I didn't believe it was a maintenance issue. The...
I really don't want to squabble with the sheriff over three hundred dollar locks. I think we should just pay it. It's only three hundred dollars. In the scheme of millions of dollars of budget, three hundred dollars doesn't seem like very much to get in an argument about.
A thousand requests for three hundred dollars is a lot, and everybody is sending me everything now, since they feel pinched, and I don't blame them. But we're pinched over here, too, and we've never paid for those locks before.
Doesn't he have his own maintenance people?
Yes, he does.
Well, his maintenance people are paying, or his maintenance people are doing the work. We just need to purchase the locks, correct?
Once again, Commissioner, I'm not trying to be contrary. We've just never paid for the locks before, not to my record, remember.
Well, how often do they need to be changed?
I couldn't tell you that.
Well, I'd make a recommendation that we pay. I don't know if I have any support from my other commissioners, but three hundred dollars. That's not... My other issue is, if people here can get the agenda, but for those of you at home, under Number Four, Board Correspondence, it is from Ohio Attorney General Richard Cordray, and it was kind of difficult to read my, the website on mine. I don't know if you could read yours, but it's www.ohioattorneygeneral.gov/smallbusinessflyer, F-L-I-E-R. He's very proactive in helping small businesses, and a lot of small business people are experiencing fraud as far as purchasing things on the internet and things like that. So he's recovered over sixty thousand dollars to help these small business people, so they don't get ripped off and keep their businesses open. So, Hal, if you can please put that up on the screen for our small business people that watch on Saturday or Monday, I appreciate it. And I think that's all I have. That's all I have. Oh, and I know Brad wrote a story this morning about the meeting we had with Stu Liptre yesterday. It was very productive. That was for the quarry project. I had intended to go to the State of the City in Aliria, and our meeting ran to almost twelve o'clock, and by the time I got there, there was no parking, so I'm assuming that it was a very good, well-attended event. Yeah, I couldn't find a parking space, so I ended up going to Applebee's for lunch. So, that's the end of my report.
End of parking industry, Commissioner.
Yeah, I know. It's crazy.
It was a packed house.
Yeah, that's good.
Mayor Grace did a nice job explaining the issues he went through. It's the first State of the City this year. Well, no, we did North Ridgeville's last week.
Yes, we did.
So now we're on two of them, so City of Lorraine coming up. And have we scheduled ours yet, Jim, for the State of the County?
No, we have not. When I spoke to my three esteemed superiors, we had several different opinions on when that should occur, and...
As he oozes with sarcasm on his superior's line.
Well, I, you had different, you had to express different views about the timing of that with regard to current fiscal situations and the work that still needed to be done, and there were some concerns about the report. And clearly, we have some budgetary issues because we're still on a quarterly appropriation, and, you know, how we were going to report out that. And then there was some concern that you didn't want to do it in February, because both cities were reporting out in February. We had tried to do that before, thus, you know, overextending those folks that do usually like to go to these things, and they had three of them really right in a row. Any direction would be greatly appreciated. We had ours at Spitzer the last time, and I thought it was a fairly good event. So if you have direction for me, I'll certainly get it done.
Also, condolences out to Sonny Miller and his family. His wife Cookie passed away. Dear friends, really involved, Cookie's been involved in the political scene for, boy, as far back as I can remember, and her husband was former bailiff for Judge Betluskis. So condolences out to the family. End of my report.
Thank you. I'd just like to publicly thank especially Ken Sislak, who gave a presentation last Friday at the jointly-sponsored Team Lorraine County, Lorraine County Community Alliance Groundhog Day. He talked about commuter rail service and what it would mean to Lorraine County, and apparently, The Morning Journal thought it was pretty good, too, because they had an editorial on Saturday entitled "Community Rail Service: Economic Teamwork Key for Lorraine County." So it kind of said that we were on the right track. Got that?
Yeah.
Right track. I love that. It just came out. So, thanks to all who participated, especially those who worked behind the scenes to make it a worthwhile event. And Hal has sent an email that he will be delivering the website information today, so if anybody wants to view the proceedings, it'll be on Lorraine County Community Alliance's website starting today. Thank you.
It's a very good event.
Very nice job.
Mm-hmm.
They said some very good things there, especially Jim Robey.
He said nice things about us. That's why you liked him.
Well, no, he just said nice things about what Lorraine County's doing
Well, that's what I meant, Lorraine.
In the sixteen-county region.
I, that includes us.
Yes, it does include us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board Correspondence?
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody?
Public comment?
Want to speak?
See, Rob Johnson, what are you doing here today? Just come to hang out?
Just came to listen.
Okay.
Probably thought there was going to be something.
I thought you were going to give me some good information about the airport.
We had that airport meeting last night.
We're still there.
We're still there.
And, good, and we saw you at the North Ridgeville State of the City address as well.
Yes.
You get out in the community, too, huh, Rob?
Yes, I do.
Anybody else? I move you go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the Administrator.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Geogha and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorain. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorain when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorain's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that pass through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Asta Bula and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823 while the township was in transition to the new Lorain County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeyville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices. And in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorain County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorain County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rosson in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossons were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Elyria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorain County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorain County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Elyria and the city which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorain County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Elyria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorain County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero French General Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation and in the winter of 1817 moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace and in fact was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of '76." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorain County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Rusha Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Rusha Township was evident once again in 1992 as New Rusha Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826 and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorain County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorain County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Rusha Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporate a township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. La Grange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825 established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name La Grange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of La Grange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village also incorporated as La Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorain County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly and by 1835, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children aren't educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education or they hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorain County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorain County and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations so they can not only see but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children and of course, it's just like anything else with children. When you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60 and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Fenske? We were going to cross the street the other day and we remembered, look left, look right, look left." So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, "Oh, ooh." And we get up there and we tell them and we even give them some trick questions, you know? We'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast and we can run." And of course, they're very enthusiastic and, "No, we shouldn't do this." So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signal stops doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways and they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk and continue to look both ways because it's not safe and they could fall. They could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever. It's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade and that is "Otto the Otto" put out by AAA. and that is Otto the Otto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no! Those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo.
What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo as well as the younger children relate to Otto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross because a lot of children at schools have parked cars. He goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing. Not only from the children, we have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross with the outside box, then I'll tell them how to do that, too. Because that's what we learned.
I think that it was good because I didn't know that you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection. What happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?" And he stops and he thinks and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road. And I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs. We still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.